All right, so go ahead and hold the order, committee of the whole meeting at five thirty-three. First we have, so like I said, sort of before the meeting started, and I'll just repeat it again, just until we get our internet sorted here in the building, if you could try to download whatever you need and then get off the wifi, that would help us with streaming meeting. All right, so go to the order, any council members have anything for the go to the order, we have one council member online and five of us. Anything? All right, then review of regular meeting agenda, this is just about where we can set agenda items. If there are any concerns or questions there that might prevent you from wanting to have it on the inside. All right, sounds good. So with that, we'll move on to our first discussion item, Chief DeBauw with an introduction of new departments.
Good evening, members of council, mayor, ladies and gentlemen, please, Chief DeBauw, please. Please bring our newest school officer here this evening. This will be our final hires. It's been almost two years since they have come getting us here, we're fine here, I'm excited. The first up is going to be Francis Gilmes, he comes to us from Bellevue Police Department, and prior to that he has five years in public, so I'll let him introduce. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Francis Gilmes, traded from Hawaii, lived alone by himself. Prior to my life, which was career, I operated a community that includes bankers and commercial driving dogs. I joined work as a security officer various years ago. I joined the home police department in seventeen, I showed hands in White City and Cali. So it's a pretty much not part of all types of projects, I love it. I moved up here to Washington because I was basically pressed out of Paris, it's very expensive now. So far, I love it, and I just want to thank Chief DeBauw for giving the opportunity to be part of the block. We bought a small town with three people, the minority, and so far it's I can't wait to get started, instead of being here, thank you guys so much. Awesome, thank you. Next, we have Louis Yuan, he comes to us from Seattle Police Department, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, Senator, my name is Louis Yuan, I'm originally from China. Came to the United States ten years ago, spent four years in the city for my college, for my high school, and four years in the popular New York for my bachelor degree in psychology. And after that, I got an offer from ICD, so I moved off to Washington State. Spent one year or so with ICD, then Chief DeBauw took me, so I'm here now. It's a really nice community to work with, students in here, they lost the forties, and they stare smiles, they're like, proud of my work. Yeah, it's a nice community to work with, I'm really glad to be here.
Do you have any questions, Bonnie?
I have one for each, Steve Liddich, that's the public works. Will it in something other than English? Yes, whatever. Excellent, so we have, we like to know which staff members can speak other languages for development, billing, so you will probably get called at some point, they'll help out.
They will call them.
You still have your recruiting partners?
Yes, sir.
All right. That was awesome, thank you, I'm so excited, you guys are police staff now. All right, so next up, we have Director Lenis Chesky with implication on their app project.
Good evening, everyone, Steve Liddich, that's the public works. And I'll be handing this over to the project management team, Ben Ressler, project manager is on at a desk, so you can run the stream and the PowerPoint, and Olivia from KPG SOMAS is also online. I don't know, we'll call her, but she's, she's there in the wings, but I'm sure Bated Brad, that she has been along, I have children and everything else that I would say, so with that said, we're, we're appearing to share the third update and go over the project.
Perfect, thanks, Dave. Thank you, Councilman Mayor, City Administrator. Let's talk about third app. So this is the thirty percent update, at the ten percent level, we said that we would come back at thirty percent, do a public outreach at sixty percent, and then come back at ninety percent, so this is thirty percent update.
Great, I'm Ben Ressler, we have Steve and Larissa from the city, and then Olivia from KPG SOMAS. So the third app, it is Project R thirteen on our six-year tip. It extends from one forty-third to Stevens, and it's a complete street upgrade. Currently, it's a collector material that is unimproved in most places, there is sporadic sidewalk, but this project will put a pedestrian feature is the entire way. It will tie into existing pedestrian features north of Stevens and then at Big Park. There's also a curvert culvert replacement at Co- Clemens Creek. So the background of this project, it first showed up in our tip in about two thousand and three, and that included connecting it to Big Rock, which it currently does, but it was improvements from Big Rock to Stevens. That was not acted on until about twenty nineteen is when we started to apply for grants, so it was the first time we went for TIB grant, and KPG put together their estimate for us. In twenty twenty-one, we did a preliminary design contract with KPG to get us through the ten percent. Last year, we did public open houses, we did a survey for about four weeks for the public, and then I cumulated, accumulated to a selection by city council for our cross-section, and that's how we ended up with the shared use path that we'll talk about. In August, we extended KPG's contract to get us through full design. In twenty twenty-three, last month, they gave us the thirty percent designs middle, and then at the start of this month, we were added to the STIP, which is the state transportation improvement program. So the improvements of this project, we're going to have a full, complete street. So we're doing a shared use path on the east side, and then bike facilities on the west side, it'll be a shero north of Kennedy and a bike lane and sidewalk south of Kennedy. We're also going to add traffic calming, there'll be curb extensions at intersections, we're going to add roundabouts, there'll be speed radar signs, we're looking at every intersection to see how we can improve the level of service, and we'll be replacing the Co- Clemens Creek.
That's my part. So again, I'm Olivia from KPG. So since the ten percent preferred layout and community outreach efforts, we've added street improvements along north side of one forty-third place to match some developers frontage improvements that Ben will talk about in the next slide. The improvements along one forty-third include roadway widening to provide the bike lane, parking, curb gutter sidewalks, and also extension of the illumination system, stormwater system, and a little bit of joint utility trenching for aerial undergrounding. We've also completed our geotechnical exploration and have a draft soils report that we can base our design off of. We completed nine borings and two additional infiltration pits for the project, so we have all that information to move forward with our design. We've also made further progress on design of the Co- Clemens Creek in terms of determining the most beneficial alignment for the crossing and the anticipated disturbance and restoration areas, so we can move forward with our environmental permitting, knowing those impacts. And finally, we completed our thirty percent plans and estimate and submitted that to Ben and the city, where we have done some refinement to the roadway cross-sections, so for example, deviating from maybe the typical section where we narrowed down some planter strips to avoid significant trees, or for example, with between Dorothy and Ring, we were able to save some existing rockeries by super elevating the road, so we're a little bit further along on figuring out the impacts to, to the roadway and properties. We've also completed, or I should say, updated our storm reports, and now we have a complete layout of a new stormwater conveyance system, detention system, and water quality for the entire project. We've worked on the elimination plan layout, which is shown on the plans now, and prepared an elimination memo for that as well. The landscaping plans now show locations, of course, of trees, and we've named recommended species of tree shrubs and ground cover for the city to consider. And we've also start, started the joint utility trench design and undergrounding mostly for one forty-third and also on the northern segment, north of Kennedy. And we've also finished laying out the, the channelization for the roadway.
Thanks, Olivia. So I'm going to touch on a couple points that Olivia just touched on. So the Co- Clemens Creek crossing, in the plans, it currently shows a box culvert. The alternative would be to put in a bridge, the box culvert is cheaper. The bridge would be able to get designed with less impact to the stream, so we're going back and forth. We have found that the stream alignment is recommended to be changed, and I'll show that on the next slide. It's currently at, well, the angle it currently is at is not ideal for how the culvert would align with it, so by changing the stream, we can reduce the slope of the culvert, we can reduce the angle of the stream going into the culvert, which will reduce scouring, it's all beneficial to the fish spawning and rearing. And it shortened the length of the culvert, so it it costs less, that money will be offset by the stream improvement, but it's pretty much a net zero. Also, with the culvert, there is, in the outreach that we did last March, pedestrian feature at the culvert was recommended, so we have directed KPG to explore that option, and they have a bulb out shown right here as a pedestrian facility off of the culvert. So this stream realignment, you would, about twenty to thirty feet back, we would intercept it and shift it to the north, so this is where it currently runs. This would be the new alignment, on this side, this is off the plan sheets, so realigning this way instead of the natural this way, and what that does is it makes more of a straight shot right into the culvert. Olivia also talked about one forty-third addition, and so this is new to the scope. Why we're exploring it is because there are two sections of one forty-third right off of Third that likely will never be developed, or it'll, it won't be developed anytime soon. And one is the LDS church property, and that is right here. And the other is the lot directly west, right here. There was recent improvements to that house, but it's a, it only has one unit on it, and because of environmental reasons, there's a bunch of trees, it'll likely only stay one unit, so there won't be any frontage improvements. We are looking at it for adding sidewalk, because those are the missing gaps between Main Street and two seventy-second. It does not need to be included, but during exploration, we have found that due to its area and the way the drainage works in that area off of Third and one forty-third, storm improvements would need to be done if we were to upgrade one forty-third later, and we would need to do improvements likely on Third. So KPG's recommendation is to, if we don't do one forty-third as part of this project, we start doing some of the storm, so we don't have to cut into Third Ave later. To show you from a map, this is our development map that I got off the city website. And it's these two parcels right here. And why we're proposing it is because Main Street frontage improvements have been done on either side of Third, with the exception of the corner of one forty-third and Main, and that will be developed in the next several years by prep. We're also exploring doing a stormwater park, also known as an infiltration by retention facility. There is an unimproved right-of-way, I think it's Broadway Court. I believe is what they call it, yeah, Broadway Court. Or it's between Broadway Court and Valley. And essentially, what we're looking at is a way to remove fat pipes, have something that's aesthetically pleasing, reduce water quality in the area, and all tied into the system. We are exploring it, we don't know if it's a possibility yet, the soils will need to be adequate, there has to be no conflicting underground utilities, we need to make sure that there's space and mitigate any downstream impacts. But adding a feature like this into the project would really tie in with what the community is asking for. Olivia?
Yeah, thanks. So as far as next steps from here, again, I, we can now start with the environmental permitting process, and we have a subconsultant geoengineers that will assist us with that process now that we know the footprint of the project. We can also start franchise utility coordination to determine what the needs are for power and telecom as far as conduits and structures that they need. We can also start identifying right-of-way and/or easement needs, and we have a subconsultant onboard for that rest group northwest. We can also start taking a look, closer look, and have more conversations about urban design features and aesthetics with the city. We do need to do some feasibility studies for the storm park, I believe we have management funds that we can tap into to perform additional survey in that area and some more pit tests. And we're planning for the supplemental in, in July of this year.
You? All right, so the budget, so we got our first estimate since twenty nineteen. It is twelve point seven million for construction, that is construction of the entire project, including one forty-third. That includes a thirty percent contingency, which is standard at a thirty percent design level, as you get closer to the one hundred percent, that'll get refined, but thirty percent is the standard. There's also an additional five percent that's included in that because of inflation. Construction is not going to happen till it early as twenty twenty-four, so they added five percent, which is roughly what we've been seeing, it's a good, good benchmark. It also includes the full cost of our joint utility trench, that cost will be shared sixty, forty with the utilities. So it is an increase, the twenty nineteen estimate for the entire quarter, corridor was six point seven million, that only included a fifteen percent contingency, and since twenty nineteen, we've really been focused on just the south section, which included the the southwest men, which is one forty-third to Kennedy and the Co-Clemens, which is Kennedy to Taylor. And so like the twenty-one, twenty-two budget included just those two costs. Now we're tying it all together, we're going for it in one fell swoop. So to compare increases in costs, I worked with Olivia, and what we did is, is we stripped back all the contingencies that were on both estimates, so the twenty-three estimate without contingencies and without the five percent inflation is nine point four million. The twenty nineteen estimate was five point eight million, and so there's a difference of about three point six million, and we tried to figure out where that came from. Almost a million of it has just been inflation alone, the construction cost index for the Seattle market has gone up sixteen point five percent in the past four years, which is nine hundred and fifty thousand. KPG estimated the cost of one forty-third by stripping out ratio of the length to the total cost of the project, and that came out to be about seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. I've noted in there that we do, if we eliminate one forty-third, we likely couldn't eliminate the full seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, because we want to do the stormwater improvements as part of Third, so we don't have to cut into the project later. There's almost six hundred thousand in illumination, what was estimated in twenty nineteen was a less aesthetically pleasing light, and it was only done on one side, I'm not fully sure why. But that's been a big increase, stormwater between the structure pipes and then the management systems is significantly higher. There's a lot of water that we found up above Third Ave that has to be taken through the site that was unanticipated, so it's not necessarily from Third itself, but it's just working its way through this, through the system, so the joint utility trench and our spare conduit, that's about four hundred thousand, that was not anticipated, again, JUT is likely, what, sixty, forty? Was there a question? And then, and then there was just various other improvements that weren't included, like speed radar, the decorative elements that the residents have told us we wanted, and by doing it in one fell swoop, we will likely need to provide some sort of field office for the contractor. In total, that came out to be about three point six million. Like I said, there was a thirty percent contingency, which is standard, that may be refined over time. With the footprint being set on the project, there's a lot less unknowns than there were even at the ten percent, so there's a good chance that we may not need that full thirty percent, time will tell. And then again, there's a five percent escalation on top of that, five percent inflation, we will see when we go to construction, when that'll be and when what the environment is. I did want to note that a lot of our projects recently have been under the engineer's estimate, our overlay was about three percent under, our one forty-second project was seven percent under, and then our waste art treatment plan ended up being almost eighteen percent under the engineer's estimate. I think that a lot of consultants are, you know, the environment is pretty tricky, so I think people are erring on the side of the higher costs, and for whatever reason, D-Ball has not fully seen that with our bids. We are continuing to seek funding, so far this year, we've applied for the federal culvert grant. We've also asked for millions from the state for the project. We will be applying for TIB, we'll be applying for the King County Flood Control District that has given us funds for design, and so we think we're pretty likely to get funds for construction. That's historically how they've operated. And then we've been trying to set ourselves up for future grants in the future. So safe routes, pedestrian bike, pedestrian bicycle, this is a pretty good project, I would say. It's only every year, the grants only every two years, when the time came around last year, it was pretty early and we didn't have that much to go off of, if we don't go to construction right away in twenty twenty-four, and we have the construction ready plans that I think will be a pretty good applicant. We've also added ourselves to the Snohomish Basin Work Plan for any potential grants out of that for the culvert improvement. Some upcoming milestones that we have. As soon as we give KPG back the thirty percent comments, they'll begin working on environmental permitting, and we'll begin doing our right-of-way acquisition, the sixty percent is due in July, and at the same time, we're going to do some sort of sixty percent public outreach, it'll likely be an in-person meeting of some sort, we don't know the logistics at the moment. And then the plans are supposed to be a hundred percent completed by January, February of twenty twenty-four, and we'd be ready for construction if council wants to go that way in early twenty twenty-four. Thank you, and now any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Stubble, again.
The culvert, there was something about a pedestrian overlook, or you can tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so right here, I'm so sharing, yeah, so we have the shared use path running on the east side. And then there's this sort of bump out, and it over, it would overhang, there's a drop right here, and so we were thinking of either picnic bench or like some sort of sitting facility there, just some sort of resting area off of the path that would have a view on the other side, so when we did the outreach education and teaching opportunities for young children was brought up, and we thought that that would be good, we could incorporate it with the stream.
We were thinking it would look something similar to what was installed on SR two oh three and one forty-fifth for Thayer Creek, so just a little resting, resting node for, for bikes and pets there.
Councilmember Naflan, and then Chief. So I'm just looking at the cost and how it's changed over time, and then how much of this could potentially be paid for by development via traffic impact fee? And in our two thousand and seventeen, where we, where we made our traffic impact fees on this project was posted out at fifty-four, sixty-six, five point, almost five point five million. And my understanding is these would include the design and construction that's committed there, so you know, we're talking about thirteen million just in reconstruction, if we add on how much we're spending on design possibly and as another project, obviously, we're at a very, very big number compared to what we have in our traffic impact fee calculation. Granted, the five point four six million dollars have been increased by inflation proportion that would be in the traffic impact fee, but I wanted to point out too that only twenty percent of that is counted as related to development, and so that's all the amount that we can collect, so basically, on the probably fourteen, fifteen million dollar project, once you include design and all the other things, we will be lucky to collect a million dollars from development. And in addition, that twenty percent of the project cost is then divided among it's based on trip, thirty-three hundred trips, and the reason it's thirty-three hundred trips, one trip per house, so every time you add a house, and we get one of those. But that expecting that we will have an extraordinary amount of commercial development that would feed into our traffic impact fee collection. I don't know how many commercial traffic impact fees we've received in the last five years, I guess it's very, very few. Do we think we're going to get? I mean, so technically, we are almost collecting nothing from development to pay for this project, once you run through all the numbers. I'm still, I'm chilled.
I understand that, okay, for sure.
So anyway, so where are we with this? I feel like this project very much is needed because of development. There's a lot more pressure on this road, when I first moved here, Third Avenue was so low traffic, you could just walk on it, it wasn't a problem. And now it's nearly we need five-offs, there's a lot of traffic. We connected it in when we built Toll Brothers, it's heavily used now, so I feel like calling this project twenty percent, you know, based on new construction themes artificially low, considering how much of this project is needed because of development. The other thing I want to ask is the estimate of the cost is so much lower, and that's what's feeding into our traffic impact fee calculation. Can we update it now that we have a more reasonable amount? So that we can collect more. So number one, can we update the cost estimate in our traffic impact fee to more accurately represent how much this project going to cost? Including design, so five fifteen million dollars. Can we increase the twenty percent share that development can pay for? Because I really feel like it's very much a development initiative. So those are my questions. What's for Steve?
You don't want to go to anything?
Sure, okay, really quick, Sheperd's going to go next, the one in the center, yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember Sheperd, and then Amir.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks. First of all, Jennifer, thank you for pointing out the disproportionate cost between development and residence. This is something that's so important for us to keep in mind going forward and attempt to do what we can as far as making that more fair than it is, than it is today. Secondly, I, I just want Uh, secondly, I I did, I I just wanted to thank, thank Ben and Olivia and uh. And Larissa and everyone else uh involved with this, this is a great presentation, I appreciate the. Cost comparison between the original cost and the current cost, that was uh very well done and nice and easy for me to uh to. Understand, I also appreciate the uh. The additional attention giving, given to uh. Uh, improving the aesthetics, uh. Along Third Street as well, you know, the illumination is one of those, the uh, the pedestrian cutout on the bridge is another one of those. Uh, that adds a lot, that adds a lot to the community, people appreciate that, it just makes it a more pleasant place to walk and 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 be around, so. So, so thank you, uh, thank you for that as well, that's it.
I just wanted to point out that more than seventy percent of the traffic that goes through Main Street is from Snohomish County. So this improvement is not just needed because of uh new construction, is primarily needed is safety because of the fact that. Um, our road, Highway two oh three, uh. It can be impossible for our police department to get here in an emergency, um, and for emergency vehicles to get in and out. We desperately need this corridor um improved even more so for those reasons than the new construction. Um, when you look, there's gonna be a few hundred loans going in there, we have lots of major thoroughfares, so if we didn't have. The external traffic. Uh, the improvements wouldn't be as necessary as they are, so I think that's an important. Component of a conversation that needs to be acknowledged and addressed, especially as we continue to advocate. To get funding for the two or three quarter study, um, and we have actual data. Uh, that shows where our traffic's coming from, I think we need to make sure that we are discussing the entire situation and not just one portion of that. Um, of new development, cause that is by far not the only reason that we need to squeeze in verticals.
Uh, Councilmember Lovett, your first sir, did you have any questions or? Do you wanna take it? I, I mean, my one was more for Ben or Olivia, I was just curious, and I love the idea of a stormwater park. You know, I was curious, is that something you're seeing an increase in frequency? I'm not sure I've ever seen one out in the wild, so I was interested, there's some localish. Around that I could go drive by, though, was that picture somewhere in our area?
No, I took that off in ecology, um. Just random memo that I found. Uh. I feel like I've seen a couple, and so I will follow up with you, I I can't think off the top of my head, I I think there's one in Bellevue. But I will, I will.
Curious if we're gonna, if we could expect to start seeing them more, um, or what the pros cons are, the different designs, obviously, they're much nicer to look at. So that's exciting, but yeah, I'll be interested to see how that develops over time.
Not just out of my head, um, the. You know, actually, it's sort of that sentiment, I know we had a lot of discussion in terms of the east west development and how we, we. Essentially balance out the shared use path, the one of the thing, and I only mentioned it now. Because of the additional work that was done around the illumination piece as well as some landscaping. You know, we had a number of discussions in here around all the car or for, and it is interesting because. Actually, Jennifer's comments a little bit, some of the the shift we need to Main Street, the Third Avenue has been. You know, because it is a uh sort of a secondary thoroughfare, it essentially becomes an alternate to Main Street for many people who are looking to develop and. Introduce leisure activities, if there was any thought given to either, and again, I'm very conscious. When we're tight on budget and around art versus others, but there's great opportunities there in terms of. Things beyond just landscaping, you know, visual wind spinners, you know, other things that would make that. Have new things, particularly for walkers, moms with strollers, mom or dad. Bike, uh, dog walkers, you know, in addition to our undertaking piece, and again, I know we're still. Right at the sixty percent, and a lot of that comes in later, but.
So the question, just to make sure I got the rest, that question is. Are there other grants that could participate or are there other features we can cross over with grant and some of the development costs of the project?
Yeah, I think it's, it's two things, I I have to go back and look at sort of the sum of the survey results from the community, cause that, that's on a lot of different things, but as we start to. Uh, essentially. Determining landscaping of their aesthetic, if one is part, is part of the conversation, then two. Uh, yeah, I kind of expected your team is always very good at that grant opportunities. Uh, in terms of looking at what is available, but but even then, within the community, there might be, you know, other ways that could be lower cost that would would move in.
Think I'll go easier, oh, uh, very thoughtful question.
I think each third of ours, yeah.
So grants certainly are something to obtain, uh, certain grants. Have specific requirements, what is eligible, so T I B, for instance, we're gonna get two and a half percent to be used on landscape. Their definition, the landscape is lighting, actual landscape, other features that is art, so they pay for very low, just enough. Certainly not meeting the city standards of landscape requirements, um, yes, there are other ways to do it, um, you know. Also. There's not gonna be, I don't think, a lot of grant opportunity for offsetting of some of the harder costs outside of the. Uh, street skate feature that Olivia and her team has introduced throughout all our projects. Uh, cause they didn't participate on Main Street, uh, phase one and the south phase two, so. They're around, um, let's see, next kind of questions. Around the funding, so some quickness. The two thousand four evaluation relative to two thousand seventeen, the modeling and the actual prediction. Of trip counts. Were right around that point percent, believe it or not, so that's the model, we can always look at it. Doesn't mean it will or will change, or we can look at the percentage share of growth on that road that was introduced, relative to what it is now. So that's a long established, that's got legal connotations, you know, and like all and that kind of stuff, so. Something that we looked at, uh, fees, fees in general are indexed. So we talked a little bit in anticipation of conversation based on cost of adjusting the fee. Uh, not that it's impossible, but we do index our, our traffic impact fee annual by. Uh, you know, calculation, hopefully relative, close there to, um. To market conditions, but it can be looked at, and then, you know, your city engineer reminded me today in this discussion that we are looking at. Comprehensive plan overhaul required by state. As well as the associated transportation part of that, so we will be looking at our fee, uh, commence or with that process. So, not that we can't, um, we can't look, I don't know if they'll adjust that much, is it worth looking at, I mean, maybe. But if we, you know, the theory two of borrowing to pay, then the future citizens will be paying, cause we have collected. Not a lot of impact fees relative to, you know, Toll Brothers and Dubeau Village, and we did associated improvements and had for, and for that agreements. So there, there's a lot to consider, um. I don't know if those are good answers, but I have to think those are the best answers that I have to some of the questions, so we can.
Yeah, I. Yeah, go ahead, um, the twenty percent, it sounds like you're saying it's used slowly on every single project that's included, or because I'm just thinking that third avenue, if you think about. To be on there, I don't need a lot of it is right in the world. That we, the new kind of housing. You know, for getting home. On the road, and so, um, and I don't know if you know, if you live in the last time period, um. Fortunately, we are adding. New ones to traffic in this time period. Effectively, and so I'm just trying to understand, twenty percent might have been viable. Based on whatever projects were included. During that review, I guess I'm just thinking. If it was a project specific, it does seem like the third one in particular. Is there a penalty? You could try, we don't know, we need.
Yeah, not the, it's not as. Like even if it's a thousand units on the current eight, was that twelve percent? I mean, so it's not a lot of new growth relative to who has been here when the project's been installed. C I P, that makes sense? Not a good number in the sense that it's, we have put the lever on what is and isn't critical to grow. As far as we can, cause I don't know that we ever had a council that said, let's not put development to the left on recovery, um, so I I know. Like the two thousand seventeen numbers were looked at, and that was the relative amount of roads shared, including development in the forecast.
In the forecast, interesting.
And even so, because we have the T V's with Paul and Cam West at the time, I thought that was really in there.
Hmm.
It's tough, but those are those things you. Uh, for those who don't know how we build our traffic impact fees, right, you essentially had your system improvements that are outstanding. And then we look at what role percentage of share is going to use the facility. We can't use growth related fees for existing citizens, right, that's, that's an existing deficiency that we have to pay for. How we build our fee, right, numerator, cost of projects, denominator, amount of units left. Uh, we build usually free things, city money. Into that share grant money, we, we really can't. Get by without it, and then developers share, um. It's not overly simple process, but oh, you're sitting here like.
I think that wants to weigh in, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I was sitting here in my kitchen, and I'm like, let me talk, um, so there's the Grundel, um, Public Works. So the other thing that's worth mentioning about how our um, our tip project list is done. Is it's based on the type of improvement. So if it's a brand new road that the city's gonna build, and it's something that's on our tip list, it would have a fifty percent allocation from. From development, and that's just based off of our modeling. So because Third Avenue is existing and it's categorized as a minor widening, um, that's why it's allocated the twenty percent for our tips. So I hope that makes sense, a little bit more sense.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, did you have some? Yeah, I, I may have just seen you mentioning it, but um, there's also, you know, we still have. The T V D sales tax, and um, that can now be increased councilnatically. Um, for an extended period of time, so there are other funding sources that exist. Uh, that have been very popular with the city council over the last few years, uh, meaning that they bring in, brings in money from outside of the city. Um, so it just these point, um, I can see this absolutely spot that the entire hand has been elected official in the city. The push has been to get as much of a fair share out of the developers as legally possible. Um, which is part of the reason why we indexed all our impact fees, um, to construction index, uh, because it keeps pace with everything. Um, we'll see major changes when we update the park shares and open space plan, um, to our parks. Uh, for example, we're currently charging impact fees for a park that's never going to happen in an intersection area. So, um, the things like that, you also need to account for, we have plans of that include. Buildings or spaces that are never going to be built, but we're currently collecting these right now. So, um, it goes both ways in this, um, as well, and we try to get as much as we can legally. Fairly, uh, the developers to accommodate for that, that proportion of people.
And then, I know Ben, you had your list of project, um, grant. I guess either anticipated request and or current request. Uh, you know, we did apply for, I can remember the number there, for the state appropriation is over six million. Cause we asked, like, what's the number, is it a percent, what do you expect? Our office, Monica Senator Dinkler's office said. So that's out there, um. You know, T I B, I don't know, but I'll update, Greg is not like a project. So maybe Mayor, when you're down there, you can talk to the director, you know.
I'm happy to, actually.
Talk actually and see the sense.
Tell me who you want me to talk to, and I'll make it happen.
I don't think it'll sound great, because it's kind of certain programs, I'm sure maybe they administer. Project, you know, scoring. Cause Greg doesn't see we have off, or I mean. We talked this week too about not only traffic counts, but you know, pedestrian. Traffic counts, right, there are a lot of heads in that, the cats, dogs, strollers, kids. You know, young kids, teams, or it's a. Disneybug, um, so. There's a lot to consider, I don't know, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, but. Um. I imagine we're going to be successful at some point with a larger grant.
Well, at some point, I think it, it depends on the programs available to you when it's out there, um, there are a couple other. Things coming forward, like the potential vehicle miles traveled, which will help the state level. Um, and I, you have a chance to build sponsor a couple weeks ago about. Um, potentially looking at future expanding that to counties and cities with the G V S tracking. Uh, to accommodate. For that road usage that you don't get any benefit from, for doing this on state highways, we should be doing every. Um, and that would definitely equalize the system and reduce the aspects. Um. Challenging situation intervention.
And and for, you know, product manager wrestlers point to like. We didn't do well on safe routes, cause you don't have designing, right, a lot of the programs do like already stop. We're committed to design, I'm not overly. Concerned that nothing's gonna show up to the system financing. But we're not committed to anything other than complete the design, getting it ready to go, and you know, we have time to shop. Um. So that, that's something there too, and when you get on list as an alternate, I mean, Councilmember, when you sit on boards. Project drop off, money shows up, someone gets one call, right, I mean, it does happen. So I think we're, we're heading in the right direction, while you're checking at thirty sixteen ninety, so you're not surprised, um. You know, the team put together the bits and pieces that have either been added or contributed to the delta, uh, they all seem reasonable. Um, I don't see anything that, I don't think folks here would support, it's just, you know, how do we afford it, and can we maximize the. Development communities contribution you can buy that, like, those are fine questions, Pat. That we should, you know, make sure we're answered.
See, you think, Matt, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna augment what, um. Uh, Mr. Wrestler had to say, which is. Once it becomes a little more clear that it's shovel ready, we might get more bites on grant opportunities than we did it at ten percent. Designing.
Uh, Councilmember, super quick, on the state routes to school. Um, I'm just wondering, cause the school district owns that piece of property, which, okay, doesn't count, cause I'm just thinking, I don't. Is that roadway within the distance to even qualify for state route?
So, yeah, Ben, you guys know. Yeah, it it's close enough to Cherry Valley. When I wrote the grant last year, I said that there is likely gonna be a school. Um, I talked with the school district briefly right before, um, that they did own the parcel down south. But we technically applied off Cherry Valley Elementary, uh, and the gap, because it's been improved, uh, third has been improved north of Stevens. Um, but I did pin it that if we can do these developments or improvements, it will benefit if this will, so. So the project.
Any questions, comments?
And everybody is refining things, you know, of course, looking at form stuff, you know, Ben talked about elimination of expensive things. Energy, right, underground power lines, we get a kickback from that, cause the project still goes through our. Payment funding process, but then they are a sixty percent return, based on some schedule seventy four, a horrible pair of stuff. Um, the non-power utilities, so uh cable franchise, they cover their own costs, they reimburse us for any other things. We did put empties on there, a common piece of empty conduits for future use and lease and our rent on our own. Um, something we'll probably be talking to you soon about too, this will be your franchise that's going to come in town, we have some empty conduits, we do not have an established rental price, but these prices don't know. We haven't developed that, um, cause we have them in the ground that people wanna use, that we really can't sell, except we don't have a. No lease rate yet, you know, leases, purchases and sales, welcome to council for, um. Creation, management, contract, all that, so. So, yeah, we were, we will be looking at everything we can find to help reimburse against some of the costs that you saw available. Um.
Councilmember, how much of this is a little for, or is it, is who are the only one that would be able to?
Um, no, I think. No, sir.
I have not seen her, I have.
It's not a lot, we have, we have a store, we have operated some of that, and. Not a lot, but yeah.
Not a lot, though.
Well, we, we talked a little bit, you know, you're not worried about ten and twenty thousand dollars, if you have, I think, I mean, sub regional opportunity fund money that we get allocated. For, right?
Hmm.
We have, what do we have in the bank, I don't know, Ben, or if you remember, like eight thousand bucks.
That's from our general ability?
No, just from the. No, just from the county, on what they collect on behalf of the city or rework. So we usually put that on smaller capital projects like what we do for military. Things we don't have creative funding for that we don't need to vote, but those numbers, I think Ben's ready to say, do you remember the number, Ben?
Hmm, it's under a hundred.
It was eighty something, but those are the numbers we, we have access to, but we're really not interested in eighty thousand right now, or if you didn't, a couple more zeros.
Instead of the G S P, my.
Storem water, yes, but again. I don't know the total storm cost this time then, but.
Like I guess, does it have to be in our G S P plan if a capital project goes to town? Is it one of those type of things?
Uh, it's, it would be both new and retrofit. So we have to be looking detailed, but certainly some.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, that you're applying a plan to make sure it's eligible to meet that.
I'm sure we are the person containing in Jersey, so. Behind the scenes, um.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, those are. We have options and opportunities for some smaller chunks. We're just right now still looking for that. Cause we will be able to fill those smaller gaps, I know that, right? We've got some. We wrap whole things here and there.
Well, thank you for all of this. I know it's really important. I mean, this came up, um, someone who had come to one of the council chats a few months ago. And asked like, what's going on with your avenue? Because you know, a little bit of time passes and people worry that it's all. Is it still going? And I'm like, that's just a really big project and it takes a lot, I mean, and she totally understood that. So it's just good to see this update and understand what direction we're going.
Plans are on the website, Ben does a great job of weapon up the days, so there's different stuff. There, a lot of the neighbors, you know, have reached out here and there and then re-met with one of them, um. I don't know, Ben, you wanna share your screen real quick? I sent a clip of that, uh. Overlook, if you're not familiar with mainstream overlook. Kind of bump out, it's can a lever in a sense and you just have opportunity to get out of the walkway and then look over the. The kind of. View scape, um, yeah, I just. That's kind of out in front of, you know, gotten everyone, third avenue is kind of treated and different. Um, so there's options, looking at trees. But certainly designs coming together, still be refining, you know. Larissa's still looking away is the trend from up the storm. You know, grading like literally you said, you refine the road section and I don't use my hands, we sort of have some section handy, but a normal road, right? It's tiny, that all great for the edges. So we're picking up the east side of Third Avenue, so not only does that help. Control drainage to get to where we wanna go, it also limits grading activities. So if you pick a road up, but. You don't have to cut into the neighborhood, drive with the full side of foot, you can leave the foot of wall, you can do those kind of things, so trying to blend in many. Maybe atypical design elements and strategy that we can get it done. It's gonna impact people, everybody wants it, loves it, but the five or so people who live on that uphill side, their driveways aren't moving through. And that's just tough, like they're trying really hard, so. A lot of things that fit, if it was all new construction, that'd be easy. Retrofits are super difficult, so. Yeah, that's all I have, any other. When we get to the summer stuff, we'll start having sixty percent meeting. I assume a hybrid is handy, people like that, a lot of people attended virtually. Um, I don't think we have, was it just virtual?
Yeah.
So I would imagine maybe both.
Yeah, I I had talked with Olivia about figuring out a way to make it hybrid, um, have an in-person element, but also treatment.
Thank you guys, great job.
All right, thanks everyone. Um, so with that was the only thing we had on here. There's always some written reports, you can plan a guest. Um, if you liked to fill the time, you can move this in.
Yeah, I would say either, um, yeah. Oh yeah, if we don't know committee reports, council, yeah, that would be perfect if you wanna go and do.
So we're gonna go ahead and do the city administrator report. I have to figure this one's better. I got my glasses, so I could see it. But I can see it well. Um, okay, so city administrator update for, um, this E theme. And same agenda as always, so the first thing. Uh, next slide please, it's just um, a reminder that we have a meeting next week. Um, for A R C to come back and talk about additions to their report. Um, get some new information, um, council to build into their report. They're also going to come and speak to us, uh, we've got a preview of some of the slides. On um, funding mechanisms or um, some of their recommendations, so they have quite a few slides on that. And any information you all want to give, um, myself or Steve on. How it would be useful for you to receive information and engage with A R C, I'd be happy to take that feedback. Um, having seen some of the slides, they are word rich. Um, there are a lot of words on each of the slides, and so, um. You know, wanna make sure that you get as much as you can out of that meeting, so um, please let me know and we can follow up with them. Um, what is the agenda for next week? I'm just doing committee assignment follow-ups. Um, we've gotten a couple, um, things back on descriptions for those committees. Um, so we'll be bringing that back to Cal. And then there are a couple of committees and regional committees that we need to get assignments for. Because we have voting coming up in some of those and, um. Uh, Director Thomas, I think there was watershed, the environmental.
Yeah, water shed, um, work the. Yeah, also Mizwak. Never had anything, there's a lot going on.
Mayor with your Mizwak.
Sorry, uh, municipal solid base, which is an advisory. Um, every city in King County is a member and has to see the table.
Um, so that will also be on, uh, the agenda for that next slide. Um, so our community development update, so in February. A lot of permits, fifty eights and, um, more coming that look into have opened a little bit on the community development. In terms of permits are processing, we have two new planners beginning work this week, one tomorrow, Luke Joe's tomorrow and Naomi is Thursday. Um, so very excited they will be with Estella across the hall from my office, so we somehow managed to fit three, um, birth stations. In that area, um, downstairs in City Hall. Uh, the department's going through a lot of training and Director Thomas, I do not know what those acronym stand for, so.
It's essentially Washington Building. Building Official Association, American Planning Association. I did wanna say something, it's okay. That is the, we issued twenty four single home permits in one month, it's a record all time in this city. And we are, we're on track to be probably hundred and fifty plus this year.
Well, maybe anticipate a certain month of the year where we might see a slowdown on permit receipt.
No. Maybe after June.
Or code provision that might be changing.
Sorry, thank you, Steve. Uh, so, uh, come July first, we'll have new building code, energy code. And while in a current interface code update, which will actually be bringing forward to council April through June. And so we'll probably have a flood of maybe a hundred plus permits coming before that date. Because the changes then necessitate changes to their plans.
And we have those different, um, code updates scheduled. Um, for each month between April and June to bring to council. Kind of put them on the calendar one at a time, so we're not dropping on council all of the code updates at once. And then the housing need assessments survey will go live next week and we've already calendered. I believe the second weekend of April, um, to bring the needs assessment results, um, back to council. Next slide. Um, so Club Works, we have recruitment underway. This time, Steve, you remember what you put on? Transfer this portion of the presentation back to.
Yeah, so recruitment, um, currently intern, maintenance one, maintenance one, pursuer and then seasonal. I have a couple seasonal, uh, folks being with that now, the intern, Larissa, and I think Ben went through that process. We will be, we, we, we offer, uh, fellow from W S U and sadly he turned us down. So we are bringing in someone from the East Coast. Uh, he is willing and and April was, we're a little reluctant and are curious if he's gonna show up, but. Uh, he's, he is coming, um. That'll be interesting. Uh, the other two jobs close on the fifteenth for review. Um, one forty second is nearing completion, if you have or haven't walked through. Most everything is in except for the final basketball. We usually wait for a good stretch of weather, forty five degrees and rising is the, uh. They expect for paving. Uh. Wednesday next week, our crew will be removing the existing nest. We do have a federal, we have a state permit that is. Federally oversought by Department of Fish and Wildlife, State of Washington, is federal line number Bird Act, so that. Permit allows to remove the nest. And we are then putting deterrence on the light standards on the property. And then Friday, hotel go via P S C is coming out and erecting a new pole with a new nest deck the guys built. For respect that Jim Caesar is this operating solution still provided up, so that would go up, um. No video camera yet, no work on that. And that should all be up before the migratory pattern opens in April for off spray. Um, let's see. Uh, both, uh, police stations moving along, I think. Uh, there should be some pictures on the next couple of slides next there, but we'll get those. Uh, kitchens about wrapped up, putting things back together, waiting on the countertop. And now with fast flooring is in the majority of the building, the West Wing offices are all floor repeated. Uh, put back together, waiting on windows and then, um. Restroom, slack, uh. Locker room is underway, uh, fingers are moving, uh, fairly good. I, I know the chief has expressed his pleasure with the contractor we found there. You know, there's no out of hand, they're always there, they work Monday through Thursday, four tens, but here we are this weekend. So we're doing some work in the lobby when we're closed Fridays, getting bigger all weekend, lobby, chief's office, some other spaces that are a little harder to. Keep people out on a daily basis. Um, so that'll be going on, I told you, we're close. We did get the well mitigations certified as part of area, so. Wanted to thank for the requirements that King County permit and the met land impacts. Uh, overlay prepping, Ben and Benny are working on overlay. Um, pretty cool plans that Benny is our newest engineer, was an intern now as an engineer. Uh, hand tools as far as, uh, cell phones for survey data pickup and surface creation. Through some programs that can be dumped right in the CAD, it's pretty awesome. But that'll be something going out, the funding, uh, Dana's online, but revenues for transportation benefit district, which is the two tenths of percent sale pack. Are coming in above what we expect. The things are moving along really well there, we're always hopeful for competitive bids. Ben's working with the state of Washington on traffic control and access. Uh, cause we're working on, if you don't recall, the overlay is gonna be on Big Rock from Main Street's intersection up to the Culver, if you didn't know, there's a Culver just. Uh, east of the eastern most big wave entrance. And then the rest of it is new painting that came in the suburban. And then Cherry Valley Road from Main Street to City Limits, which believe it or not, don't necessarily go down Third Avenue. So we're working on that, uh, design. And the county is working, again, Ben is working with them. State of Washington is also involved because they are planning their overlay work on Main Street. From Virginia to the north, so it kind of dovetail a couple of things in, um, so we don't do something we don't wanna do and we make them do something we don't want to. Um, this is what our tactic is. Uh, with our input office remodel, we have hearing Friday, so we should be going out to bid ASAP. Uh, working on moving, planning for that relocation. Uh, servers, all that kind of fun stuff. Um, Dana can correct and come wrong, we had a appropriation of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the state. Confirming through them on the project administration, or actually, I. The number is like seven point seven now, I don't know how it went up, maybe they gave us an inflationary bump, but I didn't ask, I didn't wanna know, but it's more than they said, so. That number is good news, um. We have about thirty three thousand dollars left to recover from the lease stations grant or appropriated from states, so that one's being collected. Thank you, finance. We'll be bringing forward the King County Youth Sports, uh, grant for design, the hundred thousand dollars to participate in. The second phase now of design of the park itself, um. Then add this grant through King County, um. Awesome. Uh, conservation futures, uh, Gavin's working on the other one for King County, uh, park flooding. But, uh, that's, that's admitted, uh, it's on the next slide. And then before we switch slides there, uh, first and be hall has some calls for side distance issues. Uh, we're currently temporarily walking out some stalls, see if that helps, it is an improvement, but we're, we're considering per making that permanent and or turning that into a one-way. So that's. Not always fun, but technically for our county council actions, I'm the one with these. Uh, so that might be coming, and yes, yeah, eight hundred and three two thousand is the conservation future grant request for three parcels. Uh, city match is six twenty four in cash. We haven't been awarded this yet in none in grant, but also the opportunity to use some of the previously purchased. Property as a match. And if you do that within two years, which we are over my like four months. Um, it's a notable question that. So we have to request that two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and seventy seven of our previous purchase goes towards. Our match for the conservation future, futures required fifty fifty share. Uh, so parcels are the green ones that are on the top right of your screen. There's technically two parcels to the north and there's technically one parcel on the south. Each just under five acres that we went after for continuity of, uh, land mass. Uh, support by P M of King County Conservation Futures. And their immediate adjacency to the park and what we could or couldn't add. To the park per se, if we are awarded the money to obtain those lands. We do not know if people want to sell, we do not. For parks and or for the eligibility of the program, you're not allowed, uh, condemnation or acquisition of parcels for parks through that program. So if we get awarded that, we have to friendly, friendly negotiate and if they don't want to, we're out of luck. But would be using the county as real estate services too, if they have time, as they said. And then a tidbit, I don't know if anybody has heard yet, but we'll do our road will be closing this summer and across the valley just. Up above West Pointe Valley Road for a fish friendly hole replacement. It's a mainly project and will have a thirty day full closure. So get ready, it is an obvious. Puzzles are like travel light, isn't necessarily convenient, but still. Better than flood season. So that's their timeline there is on their website, um. And that's all I got.
Alright, we're psyched.
Oh, the pictures of the. Yeah. Yeah. Super tidy, and we have a cabinet drill order, equal to change order that we have relative to what you see in front of the existing kitchen. And stuff to the left of the screen is the additional gadgetry that we wrapped around the side. Replace some of the kind of adjunct and aging gadgetry that was used as pantry.
Uh, next one. We're gonna. Uh, so just a few things, um, from City Hall. So we have our recruitment underway for the community events coordinator, communications coordinator, emergency management coordinator. And we've had a really good response, um, particularly to the communications coordinator position. Um, so we will, um, begin that process of selecting applications for interview and building out that interview process soon. Um, the application period for all three of them closes on the seventeenth. But I've done a first review of kind of the first set of applications, I'll do another one tomorrow. And then, um, they close on the seventeenth. The finance director search will begin next week. I've sent everyone a form. Um, to solicit feedback on the finance director search. Um, so please, if you would, if you're interested, provide me that feedback by the tenth, that like. That I'd like to get that to our consultant to um kind of jump in really quick on that recruitment. Um, there's one other item in um that I didn't include, but I want to um offer in this city administrator update. So like Steve said, when wastewater treatment plant. And the office remodel happens, that staff are all moving to the uh youth center. Unfortunately, well fortunately, new staff coming on, that's great. Um, unfortunately, we have no place to put them. And so um it looks like for a period of time, we will be moving some of those staff um down in the Rose Room. The unfortunate thing about that is we just opened up to the community for renting this space, and so there are quite a few groups that have a strong preference for the Rose Room. That will, we will be asking for them to move their reservation up here, probably in the front conference room. Um, so there may be some unhappy groups about that development, because we have one group that uses uh the Rose Room three times a week. Um, and so we'll be putting, and there's a little office right before you get to the Rose Room, we'll be building an office there, I'll probably be splitting my time between. Here and City Hall, because those are brand new staff. Um, if they have immediate supervision, um. The other issue that's come up with using this space is um kind of figuring out how to prioritize what is now our council chambers. And asking our community groups that are interested in this space to um kind of be respectful that we have a council chamber now. Um, that has limited um. How folks can use this this floor here. So we're kind of working through the visitor center issues, but um. Uh, I think probably once we have to reconfigure everybody and um ask for um modifications, reservations, we might have some unhappy folks. So just wanted to let you know. Um, I think that is it for city administrator update, but happy to answer any questions.
Last of the question, more of a request, and then you put this together sort of where it lasts. The day before the the council meeting, there's always really great information in these reports. Uh, I guess my request is that it could potentially be added to the folder or the particular meeting, uh it provides the historical work, but it also gives us an opportunity to go back and. You know, look at some of the metrics and numbers that I think you can email or reviewing the recording.
Yeah, certainly, and what we can do is we can go ahead and go back and I can pull some of the others and put them in a place that is more easily picked out.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just to add on that, at one point, I'm not sure uh if we're we're having that now, just any presentation that came through a meeting was supposed to be um made available for council. And and hopefully, honestly, um in a holder, and I don't know. Um, if that is happening or not, just room for guests that come on into presentation. Cause we think that would be part of the record and often, you know, things are going quickly and you're trying to read it and. Can't write everything down, so that was something that um. They had been trying to do before, and I don't.
Okay, yeah, we can um do a process to change, John and I will work on trying to. Um, one question I have for council, what do you all have access to in terms of SharePoint or shared platforms? Do you have access to any of our city, we should have access to all the city council documents. Um, there's a SharePoint site development, okay.
Could it possibly put a link and just to the council distribution? Of what we think we should have access to, and then we can click on and just make sure that it does connect. I, I think I know the one you're talking about, but sometimes you guys talk about a different drive, and I don't think we have access to that one. Maybe just in, yeah, that might help us figure out, and I test the links too, just to make sure we're not going up the same as you are.
And I think we have access to find the documents that are linked to in here, like we have to go to the agenda. I don't know if we can find the folder ourselves that contains all of the materials, so then it's very difficult for me to search.
So often saying, the packets, when you click, um, when you click in a SharePoint, you click on. The date of a meeting and everything in a packet is in there. So it's all, it's all, each meeting has every.
Okay, I've been going to do it a different way.
But we'll double check just to make sure, um, so the way. We create the packet, um, will have. You know, present preloaded presentations that are the last minute invariably particularly be, I'm working on it on Tuesday and we dropped my CA report into kind of the meeting. Um. At it, for want of a better word, but we can make sure that all of that's in a SharePoint file. And then send you all a link to it. Yeah, so and I'll go back and look at the previous reports and make sure they get in there.
I just wanted to remind everybody tomorrow might be uh police department will be hosting the town hall at the review school district office. Uh, for the body worn camera program. It begins at five in the last call, probably about six or seven. It'll be a similar presentation, we'll be bringing the council on the twenty first, so. If you're unable to make it, we'll be presenting here, so.
What is the format, and so you mentioned there's a presentation, but is it a drop in any time between five and seven?
No, we're not, we're gonna be up to agenda, we're gonna open it up and then kind of go over, you know. Why we're going to fight one cameras, and we also have uh one of the vendors is gonna be speaking, kind of over the. Um, capabilities of the camera, show them what they can handle and what what is captured.
Chief, did we get one of the body cameras in?
Um, it was supposed to be in today, but it hadn't arrived yet, so.
Well, six forty nine, um, I think we can go ahead and take it. Be done and take a break unless there was something else that you saw on the agenda for council that you wanna, there, do you want to see your report for the council meeting? Um, are there any council members who can have any reports that they were, I mean, you can certainly say that for the council meeting, or if you had it now. Anything in your report for the rest of us?
Yes, there's an FBA meeting coming up, and everyone should, you know about it, but they like, uh, they like if you are a CP, this one has to be all. Um, and then if uh. More than three of us plan on going, we would need to have it in the list. I believe, so I don't know how we want to handle it, we haven't. I'll save it briefly, but just. I don't know what a profit should be or not, that we should just let the board know, and on a condition. Yeah, and then we'll, we'll figure it out.
Um, what, I haven't looked, I saw the email, but I didn't read it, what city is it in, do you know, top of your head, I'll be. And what date is it, is it the usual like last Wednesday or? And S P is. March twenty ninth, um, trying to make sure they're consistent, you know, when we have to RSVP for S P G five? Like asking all these questions, or you're lame for me, or you might, why not? I know.
Hey, you don't see the deadline, okay.
So it's March twentieth, so Wednesday, and so they usually do like a social networking at six thirty, and then the dinner's usually at seven. Um, I'll probably go, I don't see anything else on my calendar that conflicts, but I'll email the clerk and let him know, anyone else planning on going? Speaking of carpool, you guys are going, okay. All right, well. Yeah, let our clerk know if you plan on attending, so I guess we can go ahead and take a break now. Um, feel good during the video of the whole. At six fifty two, and we'll be back at the council meeting.
Thanks, everyone.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-three Duval City Council meeting at work. If you please join me in rise with my seat. If I tell you just to the blood of the United States of America and to the well, which stands on a nation under our hand, and it is all the liberty and justice. Will you please take my role?
Yes, ma'am.
May I show your directions?
Mayor Ocklander?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Cam McHenry. Mister Mercer, I'm here. Mister Isaacson. Mister Soffel, you're. Mister Shaper.
Here.
And Miss Knappland.
Here.
And Mister Lovell.
Here.
You have a forum. Under additions and corrections to the agenda, uh, you know, council member Isaacson is, uh, working this evening. Uh, so it's up to cancel, uh, whether you would like to excuse that absence. I would, I'll just say under any objections to adding the excusing absence to the accepted. All right, uh, that's since it's used and we'll go ahead and are there any other additions and corrections to be checked? Seeing then, all those in favor of approving your C P A's agenda, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, with that, we will run the presentations. We have a proclamation of our resilience month and and for our Mr. John Rotera, we'll read that into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, whereas the city of Duval recognizes the importance of a community comparison in a first. Childhood experiences. The effects of A C E's. Trauma and toxic stress on the developing brain. Our resilience building strategies, properties predicted. Predictive negative impacts and whereas it. Cumulative effects of such experiences over lifespan if ignored. Are detrimental to individuals, families and communities. And whereas newest Washington State research suggests that building community resilience by increasing. The opportunities for mutual support, hope, help and healing. And ways to feel safe and connected within all our neighborhoods and communities is beneficial. And whereas promoting community engagement to learn more about A C E's. Linked to chronic physical and mental health challenges as noted by. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And to learn how to interrupt the impact of A C E's by learning about and applying protective factors and resilience. Throughout our partners, agencies, schools and families. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Duval recognize the importance of the coalition work of many organizations. Working together towards a community of hope and healing and proclaim March twenty twenty-two as resilience month. I urge all citizens to join me in this special observance of the city of Duval. Sign on this seventh day of March of the year twenty twenty-three, signed by Mayor Ocklander.
Thank you. All right, um, moving on to comments from the audience, do we have anybody, um, there in person or online and might speak and we'll start in person. If you would like to speak, you'll have three minutes and go to the podium over by your neighbor Alex.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Porcrey and I am resident of Duval. My son attends Eagle Rock Multi-Age Elementary School within Duval City Limits. At the Riverview School District School Board meeting on February twenty-eighth, Dr. Leach, the Riverview School District Superintendent. Made the recommendation for closure of Eagle Rock and the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The school board will vote on this recommendation on March twenty-eighth. Eagle Rock was established in nineteen ninety-four and has provided a unique and valuable education option for families for almost thirty years. Closing the school is not in the best interest of our community and doesn't fit the long-term needs of current and future families that live at Duval. Tonight, I'm asking the city to help keep the school open. Hundreds of new homes are in various stages of planning and construction within Duval City Limits. Elementary school enrollment will increase over the next few years as schools continue to recover from the pandemic. The Riverview School District is currently facing a budget shortfall of three million dollars. That is projected to increase over the next several years. On February twenty-eighth, they stated that they have no money to build these schools and have no plans to prepare a Duval proposal to submit to voters. Closing an elementary school in our growing community is a short-sighted decision that doesn't look at the long-term desires of families. In twenty twenty-one, fifteen families applied to the kindergarten lottery for Eagle Rock, but there are only four spots available. We should be growing this school, not closing it. Eagle Rock currently educates sixty students but has capacity for more. Forty-six current students have Stillwater and Cherry Valley listed as their home schools. And Eagle Rock closure combined with Stillwater and Cherry Valley enrollment increases will lead to classroom overcrowding. Duval families do not want their children attending overcrowded schools. Considering the current budget of the Riverview School District, the lack of support for past bond measures such as the one from February twenty twenty. And the assumed lack of support for any future bond measures, the Riverview School District will not be able to provide enough schools for a growing community of families. Looking for options. Families will go elsewhere. Student closure, school closures harm students, families and communities. I have two requests tonight. One, I am asking the city council to attend a public hearing on Tuesday, March fourteenth at six P M. To express their disapproval of the recommendation to close Eagle Rock Multi-Age School. Two, I am asking the city council to enact. An immediate moratorium on planned school closures within city limits. The Riverview School District Administration is not supporting the people of Duval and this community with their recommendation. The Riverview School District Administration is not working with stakeholders to come up with alternatives to closing the school. Such as moving it to another school campus within the district. I know that the city of Duval supports the citizens of the community and has the ability and power to do what's right. We all know that keeping vibrant, healthy schools in the city is not just a benefit to our children, but to our whole community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Most of us were this weekend after returning. Thank you. And we made sure that we capture your name and address before you leave. Oh, sure, it's on for the rest. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Heather Rowe. Uh, do you want street address?
Doesn't identify.
Okay, uh, my street address one five two two six Second Avenue Northeast in Duval. Um, I'm also here in regards to the potential closure of Eagle Rock. My son, Keegan, has been going there for two years and it is a wonderful situation for a child who is. Very reserved and very quiet and would feel. Swamped at a larger school. Um. My husband and I moved to Duval not because of Eagle Rock. We actually didn't even know it existed at the time that we moved here in twenty fifteen. Um, but we made an intentional choice to stay here because of Eagle Rock. We, as a lot of people were in twenty twenty, considering moving to be closer to family when we realized we had no network and no community and we were floundering. And we found out about this school. And we thought that it was such an amazing opportunity for our child who we were already looking at and going, what are we going to do for a school option? And it has been wild and it is the reason that we still stay, that we still live there. With the option of this school going away, we are once again considering the thing is safe. Um, I know of at least two other families who are having very similar conversations with their parents. The consequences of closing that school are not just about moving those sixty kids into different classrooms. It will have reverberating effects. For years to come and it is a very, very short sighted decision on behalf of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Thomas Corey Walker. They're saying I live on, uh, two eighty-fourth Avenue Northeast. My daughter also attends Eagle Rock Multi-Age School. Um, it was actually one of the reasons why my wife and I moved to the city of Duval. We have an only child. She's the only child that we're gonna have. Um. The experience that we've had this year at Eagle Rock has been. Very, 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 very special. Um. We finally felt like we've been included in the community every day. We're getting to know the families and the needs of our community a little better. And what's been the hardest about this has been the lack of communication, the lack of transparency. And the way health school has, um. Treated us honestly. Like, I understand that. Nothing is guaranteed to us in life and that the closure of the school is gonna happen. But they have refused to work with us in any means. There's been no collaboration on alternative solutions. Um, I know that. Uh, about fifteen hundred kids have gone through that school in this community. I know that they come back to this community and they run businesses. And they support each other in a way that is special to a small community. I know that when the school board talks about education and economy of scales. It does not serve our community. One of the reasons they want to shut the school down is they say that is unsafe in the event of a random shooter type scenario. And the truth is, it is. It's a, it's a community school. It's right next to the high school. As parents, we volunteer, we come in and out all day. It's not the kind of hardened school that you have to go through metal attackers and that kind of thing. Because there's no need for it. All of my studies and understandings when it comes to that kind of violence. It's clear that the prevention for it is in the community. Um, every single one of the shooters, they told somebody. Children will not share that if they do not trust adults. Eagle Rock Multi-Age School creates a community. Where the adults, the children, the parents, the teachers, it is a legitimate community. And that carries over when they leave the elementary school into middle school, into high school, into adulthood, when they come back and they support us in the community. What Duval has done with Eagle Rock Multi-Age School is special. If you lose it, you're losing a huge part of ourselves.
Thank you. All right, um, is there anyone online that would like to provide a couple of comments this evening? Not seeing any hands raised. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, it looks like we have someone named Mary Beth. Uh, if you can turn your camera on, that would be fantastic and save procedure applies.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Ackerman, um, and I'm just here on behalf of the Duval Chamber of Commerce, and that's all I needed to say.
Thank you. One last chance. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Seeing then, uh, we'll go ahead and close a couple of comments. They would like to address one specific issue, um, that was requested. And that's, uh, requesting the city put a moratorium on closing schools. That's not within our authority. Um, and to be really clear, the city of Duval, uh, individual council members can, um, talk to the school board. Um, and do things in their, their personal capacity. The city of Duval has no legal jurisdiction over this, the school districts, and I am a parent of teen children in the school district. As well, um, and so, um, we can discuss your concerns, but, um, the, the city of Duval has no legal authority over what. This school district does short of building permits and, uh, following codes and regulations that exist in the city. And I know that that's frustrating, but I wanna make sure that, uh, folks have that information. Uh, and of course, we're all good for conversations as well. So thank you so much for coming today. All right, uh, moving on to the consent agenda, um. All those in favor of, uh, approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, moving on to scheduled items, we still have some, uh, we did some reports during the main hall, uh, because there is extra time, but we still have some. Remaining in the city of the extreme and three parts. We'll go ahead and leave you back first.
And we have one additional topic. First of all, good evening. Thank you, um, for those who are participating. Online and who are participating here. Cindy, I have now city administrator. Um, we have one remaining item that was going to be included in the city administrator report. I'm gonna hand it over to Public Works Director Lenashewski to discuss that item.
May you, uh, Mayor Council, Steve Lenashewski, Public Works. And I guess this and other staff in the room. Uh, what you will see on the screen is an update to the waste park combined on the city of Duval sewer capacity. Uh, we, as you are aware, have been in a moratorium, um. Oops, go off. Go ahead. One second. You can go to, keep your team on, John.
Yeah.
Right. So in a prevent that they say, we have been in a moratorium, uh, since September twenty-one, twenty point one. Uh, at that time, it was. Discovered that our sewer capacity was. Uh, subject to scrutiny and some higher flows than we expected for our Department of Ecology permit. As well as honestly expected discharge and influence receivership at the treatment plant. By that time, we entered into a moratorium on accepting the applications for development. Uh, after that time in the winter, we, we looked at, uh, all of the details of our permit. The sewer waste park treatment plant permit has three major, um. Review points and discharge limits. That have thresholds set by the Department of Ecology. Full suspended solids, biological oxygen demand and influence flow and asking for treatment. So we studied hard at what was happening, all of those combined items. And tried to see, uh, how to project that out onto the horizon and see how we could remedy the deficiencies of our certain passing. Uh, so in December, we had hired, um. Well, prior to that, we worked with parametrics around call sewer consultant to. Hear it out, anything that might or might not make contributing to the situation as a direct point discharge. Uh, sometimes that can happen with. Certain types of industrial processes, uh, simply in Duval, you have worry and a couple other small. Uh, types of developments that, and that could contribute, uh, to a kind of single point source load at the plant. Uh, we did investigate all of it. Everything came up clear. Our local, uh. I guess. Food manufacturing companies doing a really good job of pre-screening, sharing, being stewards of, uh, I would say. Kind of holistic, uh, business management and agriculture. So all the stuff goes to farms, doesn't go to the sewage, um, good stuff. Done that time, uh, stayed with our treatment plant, which was recently rebuilt in two thousand and four. For expansion and playing horizon, we came to the conclusion that the twenty-eight horizon needed to happen and we were right about long track. So at that time, we did enter to design contract in December twenty twenty-one with parametrics to do the waste retreat plant capacity facility upgrade designs. Uh, March fifteenth, we came back to the city council with a no. We did not think at that time we were prepared to come out of the control. Uh, management of development, I need moratorium. Uh, based on capacity, uh, the U B system replacement and bio solve management. Uh, oh, I left that right in there. Just regarding bullet two thousand and twelve since, uh. Next slide, John. Oh, that's what happens with the things going on at the exact same time and said something about, um. That is wrong too. That is the old version. I found yours right here. Are you going in?
Uh, well, uh, not to that. Oh, I could do that too, but I can send it.
Yes, fifty-one. The fellow in this.
Is there nothing?
Uh, that was the wrong one.
Ah.
Yes.
Right.
I apologize. Uh, with that said, I can continue on while we get some, uh, the graphs are the more important thing, not necessarily the timelines. Uh, but with that said, uh, we entered into the design and we felt that we had certain metrics we needed to. Monitor as well as comfort levels we needed to obtain with the construction of the design process. So we entered into a design contract, finished design in November of twenty twenty-two, went to bid and advertised it in November. Uh, closed and received this December twenty-second. In the council early in January, second meeting to bring forward a contractor. At that time, the low bid was well under budget and we moved forward with council approval. After that, we have been looking at, uh, monthly reports, tracking and following the trends. And coming to the conclusion that we're in good shape right now. Uh, we really wanted to see the contractors' project, uh, timelines before we, if you'd like, uh, promote the end. So at that time, we were, uh, definitely hyper focused on understanding the contractors' project timelines. With that said, the project, uh, timelines for. Operations of the fourth train and our capacity needs would be done in Jan, June of twenty point four. Um. Let's see, next slide. So it's, uh, yeah, you just have the P D F form. So it's, yeah, you just have the P D A format, which is fine. I don't think it, yeah, the next slide there. So it's a little hard to see on the graph, lots of colors, lots of things happening. But our main item of issue is B O D loading. So knowing where we are, the heavy dash green line is current year low metrics for the plant. Uh, the two completely horizontal lines, oranges are eighty-five percent capacity, right? The Department of Ecology gets involved only in three months continuous and month by month. Capacity experience at the plant of eighty-five percent, that's when they want to start doing something. We're obviously not there in whole, but we are there in enough concern to have gone into moratorium. The dark line is our one hundred percent capacity for our three train capacity. So we have four train capacity. The small line that is a little darker green dashed and swaying to the right, is actually the trend line for the flow metrics for B O D itself, on a downward type of trend. So that's just simple math. I'm not sure I believe it. And part of that is in concert with the rain we have or haven't had. Door flows, you would think B O D loading and concentrations would go up as rain went down. If not, the heavier rain we have, the more B O D loading contribution it is. Uh, so good news is we're not aligned that is increasing. Uh, what we need to watch again is continued rain um, in our systems infiltration, I know I and I inflow infiltration management, which we are, we have deployed our monitors in Old Town. Uh, so in the next few months, we're collecting data to try to pick out which, which lines are the leakiest and fix those first. We have like a collapse, that's part of our master solution. So with that said, the B O D loading is trending in a way we feel comfortable at this time. And just the sheer uh, B O D biological oxygen demand, uh, chemical concentration and management of those chemicals in the plant that have to be removed. Uh, ingredients for that, that's what you're going to know. Um, if we may, we monitor the suspended solids. If you have a clear glass of water and you see things floating in it, that's a suspended solid. Not a concern currently, not a concern uh, for June twenty twenty-four. Next slide. Inflow capacity, again, the same lines dashed orange are eighty-five percent. So we're definitely under that. And yet it usually increases in the winter. You can see our normal process management without rain some of months. Uh, it's bigger now than it was today. Uh, next slide. What we look at here is taking the current inflow, projecting the population growth relative to permits in hand uh, as well as extrapolating where we have permit uh, issuance and land and penalties. So right now, if we, uh, this would be the expected rate of development take. But right now, we're under eight, it's like eighty-three and a half percent for our inflow. If you take the average, uh, we would be at ninety-three and a half in the summer of twenty twenty-five if we continue on a rate which we think we might. We're taking in the exact current metrics that through February. Uh, next slide is a worst case. Basically, if everything we have in the pipeline comes up and comes in, whether planning can handle that or not as a goal. We would be at ninety-six, I think that's minus six point here. Ninety-six points there. So next slide, what we wanted to bring to your attention is we talked about managing the moratorium, understanding the city's uh, risk, understanding what it would take to get out of moratorium as far as design, getting into contract, understanding the contractors' schedule. We've repurchased our treatment trains. We uh, repurchased uh, through the bid. Very frequency drive, which are high demand and has a ten to fourteen monthly time. So with that said, uh, looking at future development intake with what's permitted, looking at future development take, which worst case, understanding that other projects that would come in out of moratorium and the city would be accepting permits, having lengthy process timeline. The risk, I think, is low that we're going to exceed our three months of eighty-five percent at a rate that is going to get us at a hundred percent, which is where our permit compliant issues are and finds our levy from the permit policy. So at this time, you know, staff feels it is fine and acceptable to come and let the moratorium paperwork sunset, which would take effect March fourteenth. So we would be able to intake permits or new applications March fifth. So on one hand, that's nothing, Daniel, anything I missed on any sort of the processing.
Okay. Hey, council members.
So are you saying after all that, in March fourteen, people can now apply for permits?
That would be early advertisement and the five days of the first thing and six months prior to the fifteenth, we would be. Um, yes, a new acceptance, new permit would be allowed to be accepted if we don't do anything on March.
That would be starting to do.
And yes, staff have been doing the consultants have assisted, a lot going on, contract moving forward, everything, notice that the fee issued, credit uh, timelines and everything on the contractor side checking out.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, thank you. Um, and Steve, you may have already said this. I didn't catch everything you were saying, but do we need any additional monitoring going on uh, during this time, especially before the fourth train is online?
So great question, Councilmember Schaefer. We are monitoring the inflow on a daily basis. We produce results monthly, and that is what we will continue to monitor. So if we start to get to a point like we have spoken in the past, we can always enact another moratorium should we become uncomfortable and at a level that is uh, something of high risk. Um, I know Daniel's listening, but outside of that, yes, we'll be watching and monitoring and seeing how things flow. Uh, one of the things I did, did write in there, but didn't mention in the PowerPoint uh, was the fact that we have done some education and outreach. I don't know how that affect this per se, but the amount of flow and its chemical, you know, composition coming in is at a rate you would expect to have a little different trajectory. So there's something a little different out there. You know, your garbage can, whether you're doing that as a thing, what you should and shouldn't be doing. We have been trying to work with new subdivisions and help people understand what they should and shouldn't put down at their disposal. Um, so yeah, it's, I wouldn't want to levy any of the city's risk, you know, of contracting cancel. So that's not my hopes, but we want to be uh, on the up and up. And I think we're at a comfortable spot and we've done all the right things at the city, at F A C and at council. So I think we're at a point where obviously we're comfortable bringing this forward and not bringing any action forward and letting it recommended with its fire.
Yeah, and this is, this is terrific news. And uh, the follow-up question, Steve, it, it, I, I know you already have this plan, but, but you, you know better than any of us that there's a lot of businesses and developers waiting uh, for this to, uh, you know, for the moratorium to be lifted. Uh, are, are we getting the word out uh, in an appropriate fashion?
Currently, we're not necessarily broadcasting any sort of getting the word out. I'm sure the word will get out. We'll have some information to share. You know, there's nothing certain yet. We need to get through this meeting, of course. Uh, there's again, nothing to share yet. With that said, we'll make some kind of launch. We have plenty of people in the pipeline. Uh, I would like Laura to get at least a couple of days under her belt before her doors get, getting knocked down on her phone, bringing her two brand new staff members. Um, not that there's any, you know, nefarious strategy there, but uh, they will call, they will knock on the door. We will want to be prepared. So yeah, we have some internal staff stuff to do. Uh, yeah, I, I expect we'll make some announcement. And Laura and I, I don't even know what our next meeting is. We horribly meet with Master Builders Association of, is it King and Snow or is it King, King County? So we'll, we'll be involved. I think there's a fellow on the screen here who's probably going to share what he has heard too. So um, well, the word will get out, Councilmember Schaefer.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Nekka, do you have a question?
I did that. Uh, so I remember before we talked about the moratorium and we'd like to have, we used to have certificates we had issued and that there was a problem with issuing more certificates than we had before. And so clearly we don't have a capacity yet. So in taking permits, does that immediately issue a certificate? Or we pulled it off, issuing certificates and so on? Then construction of the expansion is complete. I'm just wondering the legality of issuing certificates that we don't technically have to have before.
So the previous information on technically was also predicated on doing research and understanding what kind of a per unit rate that was coming in was. So uh, we have six hundred and sixty-five units between the active projects that are, some are really big rock, obviously in-ground building homes, all the way down to someone in a proof P flat like Towns one four three, we call them, which is off of one forty-third and what's going to be Second Avenue or whatever that is, uh, connecting into the western piece of Paul Brothers and they have fifty-five units. So right now, look at six sixty-five total in the queue. Uh, we have remaining to be issued about half of that for three twenty-six. And then remaining to be C O L, I mean, moved into the four hundred and thirty. So the estimate on the table that took the twenty twenty-five worst case, insert all those permits into the, into the accepting code.
So I guess when we open up for more applications for brand new uh, things like that, that would be what you already have calculated beyond potentially a hundred percent.
Oh, we have to agree with my, yeah, those, those numbers got still about ninety-six, six, right, percent?
Okay.
So we are a little under four percent remaining.
Okay.
Uh, of capacity. And you know, the, the risk to one longer process that some have, and what you know, to hold moratorium, we're not really at a place where you should be holding moratorium, there's legal conflict, time to act on that. So I think we're at a balance. The numbers again are pushing towards lower loading per unit than.
Any unit.
Uh, I don't think that's because anybody on the street is not putting garbage disposal in their home anymore. But I think people are, you know, being cognizant of it. We have some repeat in their neighborhood, trying to reach out to those specific neighborhoods that have a high load. Easy to find when they're coming up, you know, wastewater station. So they get a nice method, D H O A, they're receptive to sharing. We try, but yeah, I know the numbers are kind of light. Blow the light and I have an apple can, no offense to process, but in site plan, we approve over permits takes a while.
Right.
So we have a, a bit of time and ours is easy. There's a lot of projects, uh, and again, I know Aaron is the Paul Brothers on the street. But take it one time, um, as you'll see on the final plot tonight, the first phase of final plot for Paul Brothers was two thousand and nineteen and now it's twenty twenty-three, right? Almost exactly four years for a project that's large, of course, um, but takes time to process. Any other questions, thoughts?
I would just make note too for council that is our somewhat concerned is that we also have businesses that are wanting to come in and have a vanilla fiber permits um, that will, uh, if they do come to fruition, will bring significant amount of revenue to the city. Uh, so they've been stalled in this process. Uh, most of this process for a period. Um, and then there's financial, you know, big financial implications for these businesses that have chosen Duval if they can't start looking forward.
Yeah, I will not necessarily from my open go issues, but uh, we're supposed to be able to work really well in the system as well as with building department on paying on the information, understanding where we are exactly in the process of permit counts, like to the exact number. So we have a really good understanding of what's out there. That has been helpful and I would be remiss if I didn't say like, just to be clear, no action on our part does mean sunset any curve. There needs to be action where somebody would like that. That's a different story, but right now there's no action being sought. And again, it would come to March fifteenth, uh, cutting permits.
Thank you. That's it for the city administrator. All right. We'll move on to the mayor's report. Um, I look for, I make this short as possible. Um, we did discover we made a whole S P J meeting upcoming as well as the Sound Cities Association dinner. Uh, I did wasn't able to get the state of city's speech at the invitation of the Duval Chamber of Commerce last Thursday. Our team is working on uh, getting the video uploaded, uh, but are having some technical issues. Uh, so once that is done, we'll, we'll make sure that that goes out on social media, et cetera. Um, and the text will eventually be on the website as well. Um, I did sign on today to a railway safety uh, letter for Congress. Um, I think we all know that the rail issues are becoming more and more dire with safety in the country and it's actually had a direct impact on Western Washington. Uh, most recently, even though we have not had the House of the Spells Way, uh, Palestine, East Palestine, Ohio, where others have. Um, so it's a, that just went out today. So that's, um, if you receive an email from N L C, you're welcome to sign on individually as well. Um, and our representatives will see that and embrace. There is a bill, and I'll give, uh, that E W C is asking for cities to support. Um, I think it's a great bill that could have um, positive impacts for our cities like Duval. And it's Hospital sixteen twenty-eight and it actually changes, uh, allows cities to adjust reach to specifically fund affordable housing. Uh, what we do know is that all the portable housing bills, no housing bills in the past have not produced the horrible and middle housing is necessary. So many local governments are beginning to step, step up and provide that. Um, I would like to be able to sign on to the letter simply for supporting, getting the legislation passed uh, so that we have those options and we have those opportunities to have conversations as an elected body. Uh, so please let me know by phone or email. Do you have any injections uh, to moving forward with that during the rest of session? Um, also, no, uh, something we were especially talking about, the, the Willie, the wild plan of urban interface work that needs to be done. Uh, Representative Springer's bill that sponsored the request of Land Commissioner Hillary Bronze, uh, Hospital fifteen seventy-eight did pass. Uh, and it is likely to sell in the Senate pretty quickly, uh, which will mean that our emergency manager coming in at war is perfect timing. Because we will now be required by the state to have evacuation plans, other preparation in place, uh, because of our location. So, um, you know, good, good timing on that rule. Long, thank you for council, council for approving that very important position. Um, we have, uh, the Prejudice Regional Council Annual Assembly is coming up on May twenty-first. Uh, I'm not able to attend, uh, due to work meetings. So anybody that would like to attend, please let the card now so we can make sure you're registered. Um, that is a meeting where everybody can go if you want to go. Um, and they just split up our votes. Uh, you have a portion of a vote at the meeting. Um, I also wanted to share that Hospital eleven ten did pass out of the house yesterday. Uh, so I have not gotten to see the final rule as amended that's moving over to the Senate, but we do expect it to move quickly at this point. Um, the good thing is that while the building previously sets cities our size, it now does. Uh, so the threshold for being subject to many of the provisions in the bill is now up to twenty-five thousand, which is something we won't see in quite a long time. Uh, the concern really lies now specifically in transportation infrastructure. Uh, because we have cities to the north that are, you know, publicly saving, they want to take on submitting additional growth. But the corresponding planning and policy work and funding work for the transportation system doesn't exist. Uh, and there are also the impacts to um, regional water and sewer systems as well as poll bait systems. Uh, so it's going to make all of the policies that's been worked on much more important to move forward. Um, and they won't have the time to truly address it from a logistics chair. Um, one thing we are seeing this year is the Northern Party is not putting amendments out in committee. They're waiting until the fourth vote. Um, one thing we are seeing this year is the northern party is not putting amendments out in committee. They're waiting until the fourth vote. Um, so for example, um, a bill that we were tracking with WCIA, uh, that has to do with least liability has about fifteen amendments on the bar right now. Um, so that bills like that are likely to not be heard between now and the cutoff at five P M tomorrow. Uh, I'm going to say they have to start debating the final bill. Like, I think it's, it's a three month or five, two year. Um, and so, we're, we're at the point of the hustle where they call the House of Origin come. So anything that doesn't pass out of the house with the Senate is dead for session unless it's necessary to implement the budget. Um, and, uh, there is an EWC lobby day coming up on the sixteenth, uh, does look like it's a challenging way for people to attend. So that might get canceled, but we are still trying to do uh, get some time, uh, Representative Goodwin has reached out on that. Um, and, uh, the cycle of after cutoff, many of the bills that we are, uh, tracking and following will be heard in the office of chamber, um, over the next several weeks. Uh, so we're already halfway through the legislative session. Uh, some of the worst things have died, which is good. Uh, and we still have a lot of work to do to get amendments to make some of the bad, that's better. Uh, so with that, uh, that's the end of my report. And then we'll go ahead and move on since we don't have council committees, uh, and we have something, let's skip that. And then, uh, then everyone will have a chance to provide any reports, personal council reports during the media hall. So then we can move on to our one item of unfinished business, such as bill twenty-three dash fifteen, the rigid big rock phase four final flat for discussion in the decision director.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, council staff, and, and other visitors, uh, you want to check the homeworks? John? Uh, in the package is the phase four final flat prepared for the Paul Brothers project. Uh, where they go. It's funny when you do that, it jumps to the screen. The way. Uh, my computer just loaded up and uh, the uh, next slide. So this is a big project that has had several participants' ownership. It's been called thing, Washington Holding of Canwest, now Paul Brothers Homes, uh, the remaining work and the thing started back in oh five in, in official memorandum of understanding between Lake Washington Tech College, uh, developers and city. Those who don't know, there was some reasons, previous work that would have, have had a call out here is now part of Atlanta is part of the school districts, future use, should they do it. Don't suddenly presentation agreement was entered into in Canwest. Um, a development agreement for the future phases. Two thousand and eight, the MOU was amended to include the Lake Washington Park parcel now modeled by the school district in oh eight. Uh, three acre city parcel and two point nine acre city park. And that's for the P flat of phase one and two, which in there used to be west of the old Third Avenue line, which believe it or not, used to come straight down and tee into uh, Big Rock Road and now it curves, uh, to the west. Uh, here's the end of a decision on the paperwork was in two thousand and ten. A Doomball one development agreement for phase one, two was signed and issued. Well, this project is vested for these documents, uh, the two dozen by comprehensive plan and two thousand and seven zoning and development standards for the agreements. Um, the file. Uh, two thousand and six, the Canwest B A was amended, uh, some changes to the phase three over. Two thousand and seventeen, first amendment, uh, that was for phase one and two, it was a very spring chronology based on ownership and actions. Realignment of Third Avenue and utilities needed for, uh, installation prior to some of the development activity. So then a construction ensued and then we received the first final plaque phase, which was the western most lands on, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, phase two, which got you through to the edge of the third avenue just west, just east of that in twenty twenty. Phase three final five last year, which included the city parks, um, bonded elements and then dedicated parcels, which included cities to compete to Jason Pickar Road. And then tonight we're here to discuss phase four final plaque. Uh, and then the only thing they would have remaining is some of the bonded items and other agreement obligations, which it has been the better part of two decades, uh, certainly for staff because working, you know, by, it was solidified a council having going on in the background. Okay, so. Uh, some people will call it a fair project. I don't know how far I, like, oh, here, it should be gone, but all regular, uh, regular, uh, say career path. Uh, so with that said, I have, uh, next slide, just to show a little bit of the overview of the lands. So the whole thing we do, all the ridge of big rocket is three hundred and fifty units total over those spaces. Is one and two, the one forty-four to the left, uh, that included the third avenue extension, roundabout, frontage improvements on Big Rock Road. Um, I know people don't normally see things under the ground, but they did a extended amount of work through our system for water, uh, distribution. And that's a split zone, three three zone, all the corporate zone, um, now have completely escalated systems. We've reduced, uh, the use of pressure reduction station between zones. It improves circulation flow and capacity capabilities of our system, so a much more resilient system. Whether they did it, uh, or not, we would have had to do it. So, it all worked out for I would say up, I assume the brother is happy at the two. Uh, phase three, which is the light green on the bottom part of the screen. That was the larger unit, hundred sixteen units, uh, Big Rock Road improvements, the city park, the city parcels. Um, and this is phase four in blue, really far east. Sewer system improvements, uh, on the far northeast corner, there actually was a sewer main that traveled northerly to some of the deficient sewer line we did have in the one forty fifth corridor. So there have been some improvements overall that line it only have an eight inch main, uh, the rest of the mains in the southern part of the town are twelve inch. So, that helped, uh, reduce some of the capacity issues, uh, internal to the city network. Also, more redundancy and looping has been provided through the stub on the far little blue slider to the far right of the screen in phase four. And there's a pedestrian connection from development to two thousand and fifty. On top of that, uh, watering in vicinity. Uh, the project is at a point of completion and inspection where staff can recommend that we move through the final that process. Uh, they have ten thousand six hundred and three dollars and sixty-five million. They will try to figure out it's a large project, lots of bills, so, uh, they are working on that. They did build the city parks there, working on, we have finalized, uh, park credits relative to improvements. And their account, we have, uh, a joint bank account where money goes in and then as they draw, they draw them out, they issue permits against their credit. So the city has the money in hand for its improvements that they have made. It's a little bit of a, uh, process, but that's, that's managed. And all credits are established. Hmm. That's all I have on the specificity of the project and the new ninety units. The things that it involves over purposely, they have, uh, horrible housing units that are mixed in basis three and four. Uh, there's a lot, some of those will be sprinkled into the mixed use, uh, particle, will make use institutional particle that are in the two paths and chasing to the city path and the city park on the lower stuff. That zone does allow for the, the mixed use commercial setting on main floor and can have lit spaces above. And, uh, a few questions that we did have raised today were relative to, uh, oh, I should note, I know folks like to know the stormwater management of this massive subdivision, phase three, four, there's a vault under the park that is cities. There are some other small bar vault sprinkled through phases four that are owned and operated by the H O A. They own, operate and maintain the landscape trips. There are some bio swales that we both have, I mean, the private H O A will have some, we will have some when they manage public road right and way runoff, we manage them. When they manage co-mingled spaces or spaces owned and whole, like, uh, park tracks that are not the cities or tracks between, um, some of the houses that they have that are shared spaces, those are managed by H O A, those are quality elements go to the H O A to manage. Um, that's now. And then, I, I didn't make, I want to, the quick slides on some of the questions relative to access and maybe travels through. So, uh, quick picture, the bottom right is a pedestrian level luminaire. And it is in, installed in its adjacency to pathways. So there are several that will be moved. They are too close to the travel way. It's four foot, forty inches, the minimum unobstructed travel space that we need. So there's several of those that are, uh, slated for roomable and, uh, let's see. Maybe some, some notes were asked, right, on any transition plan, pro-land plan and guidance. Probably getting private roadways and sidewalks are EDA compliant on the project. Uh, access ways to the park, uh, that are C I P, T F P work that is right away work. Uh, rails, other accesses that are on this project, like we do have to the far east are not required to EDA, uh, but we did put that on there. So the luminaire will be moved. Next slide. Uh, question was utility stubs, the two acre park is one on your left and screen. That is the one that is on the bigger part of the project. Uh, I guess it's the south west Billy Park of the two city parks. So that's sewer stub provided as well of water services for the property. We anticipated at some point the city may install, it's, uh, restroom facilities at either side of the park. So we want to make sure those were accommodated for and those are installed on the left and two acre park. The center screen is the one acre park, maybe up and up into kind of a, a western and central part of the park. And city parcel has sewer stub and water stub provided to get it. Uh, five. And then, uh, yeah, so they have had connections to the two pink images you see that dump onto the screen here. The northern one, uh, is in between phases three and it probably leading to the north. It is a pathway as well, uh, that would connect through, I believe, the metal arc plats that would then get you to one forty-third over to Rio Vista Park that the city has in one forty-third, uh, place. And then the one on the right was kind of one being questioned with some slopes and stairways and handrails. Non-E V required compliance. Grays are fairly substantial. The blue image you see there on next slide down is technically that is property, not even this. Huge amount of energy property for transmission ring. Uh, we were very lucky to work with them to maintain even for our water utility because that is what connects the water up to two seventy fifth and gives us moving capabilities, uh, to serve the property and then the remaining parts of the city through there. And with that said, the flat part of the screen here, you can kind of see gravel that rises up. There's a flat run, the flat run is what causes the huge amount of energy driveway where they cobble back and forth north and southbound on their property to manage their, um, actuals, uh, power grid. So you have that there, um. These tracks that we've created for pedestrian connection, the code likes them, can require them, but we do our best to facilitate a team now. I know people want, they love connecting neighborhoods and we have it sprinkled by the city where neighborhoods are connected to neighborhoods through pathways, not necessarily always through roads, right? So that's something I know we work hard at over the years on most, every subdivision in one way, shape or form is connected to another, whether it's a road or a pathway. Uh, this is not a, in this notice, P A D products with no credits given, not on our list, um. Uh, and that is covering the alarming. So, we try to balance to how many walls are going to be on alarming. If we ever have to go back in there, what we're going to manage in the future. So, that's kind of some of the questions I came out today with some of the remaining items, uh, relative to the final class. And next slide is this the end. So, this time staff does recommend a little flat revolution kind of final tag agreement for phase four, nobody's big rock. I along five, as we said, in zeros, zero one. Questions, comments, concerns? Very good now. In the morning.
Um, any questions for Michael Lenachowski? Uh, Councilmember Neffler?
Yeah, so I, um, I hope pretty strongly that, that connection through, um, is such an important connection for bicyclists, uh, moms, parents, caregiver, those who scrollers. And it basically cutting off upper dew ball from lower dew ball. That's pretty much the only way to get through unless you took one forty-fourth, which would be pretty treacherous with a big heavy stroller going down that steep of a hill, um, if not it, don't recommend it. And so when I thought this was heading through, I thought, this is fantastic. And then I realized it's stairs. And, um, for me, I like stairs. I would love to do stairs, not a problem, but I'm here advocating for those that stairs don't work for them. And this is going to connect to a school, um, park. Potentially the infrastructure, we own another parcel there that's city property. And there's really no other alternate route to get there. So today I, um, have bid, I have a little app that tells me how far I walked. I walk all the time. So I started that right at the top of the stairs and went all the way out and around and got to the bottom of the stairs. And that was almost a mile. So, almost a mile due to her to avoid there. And that mile is not a pleasant mile. You have to go all the way down the street, you have to cross Big Rock, dodge traffic, you're walking in a horrible gravel shoulder that's sketchy and then you have back all the way back up. So, it's it's not a minor inconvenience. It's not like other neighborhoods where there's stairs that cut through where you might just have to go another block if you come around to avoid stairs. Literally, there isn't another option. So, um, what I'm asking is that if we could look at the grade increase, because there are quite a few places in the Paul Brothers project where I would argue that at least the lower grade portion, um, it's not any steeper if you just did a direct slope. And I want to just, I don't know if you could zoom into the picture. The pink area is what you're seeing, uh, the pink on the picture of the flat is the part that's currently gravelled and bog. And that part is going to be pinned between two homes. So, once that gets pinned between homes and it stares, there's no other way to avoid it. You can't go off-road into a, you know, landscaped area or to avoid it with your stroller or your wheels, whatever. And it's funny, if you look at the pictures I took, which, uh, one of them, you see wheel marks all up and down that driven into the side because people are using it constantly with wheels. You, you go up there right now, you price the thirty tracks going through the side there. People are cutting through stroller, everything. People there are cutting through all this. And once you're hemmed in, like I said, the pink area, how easily built on either side, it's going to be stairs. Um, there's no way to get down there. Like, if you have a stroller, you can't get through. Your only options are all that Big Rock, I would not recommend. No sidewalks. They So, I'm asking if we could potentially be creative. I am not saying we've done anything wrong by not planning ahead for this. I'm just saying we're at where we're at. And it feels really sad, um, to not have access to avoid the stairs. Um, I'm seeing all the households up above on the other side of two seventy fifth, up in those areas where caregivers are going to want to take their kids to the park and there's no way to get there. And I know when I had kids, I was pushing a stroller and my other kid were riding a bike or a scooter. I mean, it's, you're just cutting it off. Um, so anyways, I'm hoping they can get creative and possibly, I mean, if I take the bottom to the top of just the pink part, the part is going to be sandwiched between homes. And you look at that slope, I would argue that that would be any steeper than a whole bunch of other places within the Paul Brothers project. Um, I could point to quite a few where comes to a flat spot and then there's a super steep area. I mean, I have people without feet in the lap, um, but we have. So, I can understand why we have to put stairs in this. we have to put stairs in this section and cut off some rain. It's really difficult for me and I as a mom, I would have been devastated to see that. And the second issue I wanted to bring up is the upper portion that goes to the P S B port or whether they are installed stairs. Um I'm going to be there actually a lot of room on either side of that to just put a trailer later date to call that, but you're not going to be pinned in by homes. You've got this huge open P S B four door that, you know, maybe at a later date, we could try to find a way to you know, even create a gravel, something to do and switch back to someone and create more jump slope. Area in those in terms of about, in terms of the area pinned in between the two houses. You have one shot, either stairs or no stairs. So that's my request.
Not so, uh we won't work with the developer to try to, so it's something else. The same obligation for access to the park is through the roads that exist. We don't have anything denoted there, like this is extra, right? Everybody understands that. Uh just getting in there was not easy, not as different to developer side, but from the huge energy side and crossing the property. So that was, that's good. It is a benefit. It's like you know, it's not perfect for all travelers. So Big Rock Road, right, right, the car seventeen, that is our job to finish. It's on our list. That gets you connected and yes, we have to walk.
On a lot harder.
But uh we, yeah, it's
I would not want my kid riding a bike that way.
The amount of vertical switchback that would occur in that not, I'm looking at a whole section. You're looking at a big section, but you also have to then get from the existing flat up in some sort of way, right? Quick map on the vertical elements on an ADA compliant pathway. I don't know if guys are ADA compliance or something better than stairs. There's a difference, a big difference, right?
So what would this look be just for that home park?
Just for the pink part as it exists, it looks to me like about eight to twelve percent. I don't know the exact slope. Would argue to put it in as just flat terrain concrete. I don't know that, you know, we haven't talked about this, came out today, right? So with that said, it's something to look at, whether we get more stairs or not, you know, great, not if we don't, right? Then it's just fine. It's just deep. Little bit of a runway, but uh you know, something to consider. I can't promise anything other than we can talk to four brothers. They have their permits adjacent. Like I don't know if you want to think about other options the city has, but you know, lots are lots and may say at some prices, there's other ways to facilitate certainty, right? So that's, I'll look see, but yeah, city's current goal was, you know, facilitating front end rooms to pick up road to complete a network. This is not perfect. I don't know if we can make a pathway adjacent in the landscape. Gravel, but we are required to have landscaping uh features for the two, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be uh Director Cross and I went out this afternoon to take a look at this space after speaking to Director Lenochevsky about what it would take to do a ramp in this space. And for an ADA ramp, there is not room for it because you have to have five foot landing pads. So the idea of a ramp that kind of goes like this to accommodate the grade is not doable in that space. So then you look at what other options. So it's kind of which approach you want to take. If you want an ADA compliant ramp to manage the grade there, you would have to encroach on either of the pieces of property next to this trail to to make an ADA ramp. And you know, like Director Lenochevsky said, there's, you know, property for sale. So, yeah, conceptually. Um so an ADA ramp cannot go in this space. It is not doable.
What if an absolute slope?
Pretty eight, one and twelve, the one foot vertical, vertical horizontal.
So all of our five five blocks are one over twelve?
No, when they're contiguous with the right away road, they are allowed to do the slope. So our slope dictate that. Trails and paths that would cut through pretty compliance would comply with pathway, not with road adjacency.
So all over the city, we have five that are
So council member, we have a discussion and Rose are being involved and council member related. Ask for your question?
Yeah, the question I have is that is this, it's simple, uh step one to the developers and you just put concrete down. I mean, we understand we're already outside of scope in terms of ADA. I understand we're already doing a fix, I understand they're already throwing scared there as a, they have a nice thing. We understand all of that. So then really what it is just like, the question could be a ramp and then once we have that answer and we can have a good conversation about, right?
Uh with that, we we certainly can ask. We certainly have nothing to require.
Right, right. Director Lenochevsky shows a clarity here that um that at this point we can't force the developer to do anything, correct? So this is, this, we cannot change this during the final lap process. Uh so this project, any changes to that is not dependent on the final one. So that's outside of the negotiation of the final plan.
Doesn't mean we can't, if that's a simple question. We can ask um any map on what it would be as it sits today. I said somewhere between eighteen all fifteen hours, okay. Pretty steep, but again, we have roads, our road standard is twelve max fifteen percent. If we do some other things, which is steep. I mean, it's compliant. Doesn't mean that makes up halfway. But again, we're not looking for ADA compliance. I understand. Now, but we we have no, there's nothing to afford.
So I guess we're talking hypothetical seriously. My question is, if this sort of become like a sort of as it is, a smurf's slope, not stairs. Um and it's not adjacent to a roadway. So would we expect if that were to happen, the concrete to look like a sidewalk in sections? Or would it look more like, you know, the pathway behind that, by that where it's just in a free form, um like what would it look like?
Yeah, that's asphalt. Uh which would have been not.
Concrete.
Do I change? I mean, you know, again, looking at the two homes that would be adjacent, we are still covering alarming. It's important. Hey, the less improvements that are in there, the cheaper it is for us and however many years will be, right? So uh we might have to consider some changes to finish surfacing that are, you know, done at um installation of concrete, but roughness and other types of things could help with slipping. We just wouldn't be concerned, right? We're about slipping. Yes, there is, it's deep anyway. And I I Laura and I were not afraid to talk to, yeah, and see they are willing to try something different than stairs.
Council member.
Stairs are already there, right? So something different would be, we will be scared.
Uh the current request is just whatever is available to yet be provided in finished service at E Palmer, not to change anything. And it was pointed out to maybe in the future, the city could always try to do something different on the other side and negotiate work specifically with Puget Energy on our own. Try to make a different traveling out of there. Fair enough.
Yeah, I guess what? So I want to hear from the other council members first, so um.
Yeah, it wasn't that much of a project. I think it was just a funny clarification that I didn't get that fully answered the the like, it was just the ground section. We're talking about nothing above the ground.
Oh, not removing anything.
So the stairs would still be there. And that would still be a problem for someone in a wheelchair. Not for someone in a high, I mean, I've always taken bites downstairs and.
Um council member Jay, I want to hear from you.
Yeah, no, I I would like to see what options we we have uh in- including, you know, the possibility of, you know, demolishing the chairs and making something that uh is ADA compliant. And I understand the space constraints, but but, you know, perhaps, you know, you know, the at least we can look at uh how much of each uh adjoining lot would have to, you know, would have to be devoted to an ADA uh compliant uh path pathway through there. Uh just again, just to look at options, uh that's, I think that's all any of us are asking right now.
Great. Council, uh we're talking to you.
Just one more thing, just because I like to play devil's advocate. I mean, I was just thinking, you know, doing like a total one eighty, but do we have staircase like this anywhere in Dewell right now? I'm having hard times thinking like the high school, I suppose, or where else? One other random thing I was thinking and thinking of it is, because I know a lot of people, like maybe where you live too, there's a big staircase, right? And some people actually love running up and down. Maybe the home eventual homeowners there will enjoy the sound of people running up and down, but um anyways, that's just one random thing that helped in with it.
We do have some examples in phase one and two with veteran connections that go through those projects that are then um literally an end point that's two adjacent properties. So you could actually walk through there now and see those. And there um there's there as well.
All right. Um council member Natlin, I'm going to ask council to make a motion.
So I just wanted to mention that um I love stairs too, and I would choose to take stairs rather than the path if it was me, but it's not just me. I'm worried about excluding a large population who might be pushing this roller or people on bikes and, you know, my five year old can carry his bike um downstairs. And it would be hard for me to like carry my bike, my kid's bike and um so I I guess I, for me, the pink section is what's currently gravel. That part is going to get hemmed in by two homes and there would be no room to create a non-stair version. There's only room for one. And once it's stairs, you're done. You can't detour, that's done. The part that they already built the stairs is in the P S B four door and there's lots of room to create. You wouldn't even necessarily have to take the stairs up. Obviously, it would take coordinating with P S B saying, hey, can you have a little more space to create a little switchback um. But I'm not as much worried about the existing stairs and that might be an enemy. People might like the option to take the stairs or not. But once you get hemmed in between two homes, that pink area, there's only room for one path. Stairs or no stairs. And currently it's slated for stairs, which would cut anyone off that cannot navigate stairs there. And the other places in the city where they have stairs, I think are great. I take them all the time, but there's an alternate route that may be a block over or block, you know what I mean? Your detour to avoid the stairs is, you know, mildly inconvenient, not an almost mile detour from all the way back around to avoid this there. So for me, that's why I felt strongly um that even though stairs are great, there's no alternative without going a mile fatally.
So um, okay, so if we've gone around a couple of things, uh council members will go, but you don't have anything need to add. We are already getting close to eight. We'll see, probably eight thirty with one inch of that item today or actually two. Uh so I asked that discuss anything since council's already agreed and staff has agreed to try and work with the developer on this issue. So council members.
Uh I just wanted, that staircase uh leads up to currents, was that right? So you're walking down two seventy five. You go down the stairs and then you go across the pathway of the utility or railway or something. And then you go down this gravel, well, gravel pathway, which is standing in between the two houses. Uh I I needed to get the image fixed.
Council, would you like to make a motion?
I have a question.
Okay, is it new?
Yeah. Making does this final flat include approving that agreement of them not putting in the stairs until a later day and
No.
Because isn't there in the packet that will bring us?
Oh, it includes completing the work, yes, at a specific time relative to specific fall.
Okay, but you feel even though it says that approving stairs in that document that once we approve it, there can still be negotiations to switch it to not serve. I guess that's what I'm saying. If that document is pretty clearly, I think that
It's up to them and us coming forward. If they would do something other than the more fixed improvement, I think we could. When we'd have to amend the agreement, probably do something that ground with table people. Probably a little much and looking at Daniel, but is it called out the remaining improvements to be made? I'm going to come in with the continuous loss in the J C P. And it says stairs is by by word, but if this group think hey, worst case is there, we have to something better, we have something better, right? Don't worry about facilitating an amendment to that agreement.
Are you talking about number three in that agreement?
Yeah.
Because number three speaks to a concrete pathway and it doesn't.
Okay, I I thought I thought.
That that's the one that says that five, all comments construction of a concrete pathway on track nine sixty, all complete construction on track nine six, nine sixty concrete pathway within five months receiving the three ninety four and three ninety five building first.
Okay.
It's a concrete pathway, which is undefined.
I move I move to approve uh A B twenty three dash fourteen, approving resolution and final but agreement for phase four of the ridge at the rock. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we do not have any new business, but we do have an executive session on which will engage under R C W forty two dot three zero dot one one zero seven one seven. I um and so we'll ask um those that are uh we will pause the zoom. I think we need probably ten, ten minutes.
I would say five.
Let's do five. Uh we may get done with this, probably. Right, and are we live on Facebook? Uh after some technical difficulties, uh we are back from executive session and there's no further business. So unless there are objections, the state council is adjourned at eight thirty four P M. Thank you all.
Bye, everyone.